All right, folks, it's six o'clock. We're gonna call this meeting to order. We're gonna start off with our invocation and pledge.
Let's pray together. Lord, we thank you for a beautiful day. Thank you for the privilege that we get to live in this wonderful community. We ask that you bless everyone in this chamber tonight. We ask that you bless us as commissioners with knowledge and understanding as we hear these agenda items tonight. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to your justice.
All right, let's be seated. Good afternoon, folks. We'll start, I need to read the meeting procedures. All right, the meeting procedures. The planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff report. This staff evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is responsibility of the applicant to make presentations on request and to address any condition or factual finding with which they do not agree. The public hearing portion of this, public comments on public hearing items will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Okay, thank you so much. And we do, I would like to say, we do have a large crowd here tonight, and we're all from the same community. I know there's some very contentious issues that we're gonna be talking about and discussing. Let's just remember, folks, that we are neighbors, and tomorrow or the next day, we may see each other in the grocery store. That's how close we, we all live together, and we all wanna get along. We're gonna work all these issues out for the betterment of our community. All right, Ms. Leaf, do we have any new business?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move right along. All right. Since we don't have any announcements, we'll go straight to general business, which is 1.1. We need to approve the minutes of the mainland planning commission held from August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, subject to any necessary changes. One, before we do that, I need to say that this is the special call meeting for October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Okay, commissioners?
I'd like to recommend approval for the minutes of August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a, and a second, so all in favor. All right, can we get Mr. Edgy up on the screen? We have one commissioner that is not here that's gonna be participating. Mr. Edgy, can you hear me okay?
I, I can, and I vote to approve the motion.
All right, perfect. So that's five in favor, zero opposed. So we got that out of the way. All right, we need to approve the amendments for the mainland planning commission meeting held October first, two thousand and twenty-four. Commissioners?
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of October first, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor. Commissioner Edgy?
Yes, I approve.
Okay, we have five, zero in favor. All right, folks, we getting right to the meat of our agenda tonight. Two point one, SP twenty-four dash twenty-seven, one-twenty Cherokee Trail Plan. Consider site plan approval for a new fifty-nine thousand, five hundred square foot distribution facility and associated infrastructure at one-twenty Cherokee Trail, parcel zero-three dash seventeen, six-one-five. The site is zone planned development. Felipe Toledo, Thomason Hutton, agent for Gold Niles Development Authority owner. Ms. Leaf?
Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. So this is a new distribution facility. It's on Highway ninety-nine, near exit forty-two, and it's in an industrial park that's currently starting to be developed. So they are planning to do approximately fifty-nine thousand, five hundred square feet. They are proposing several different access points from the property onto Highway ninety-nine, and G dot does need to approve all access to Highway ninety-nine. They do have a full access, one access that's gonna be right-in, right-out limitation, and then one emergency access. They do have parking shown on the site, twenty loading spaces, twenty queuing, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine vans, six box trucks, and eleven line haul parking spaces on the site for the distribution facility. They have shown some buffers on the property, a type E, which is the ten-foot landscape buffer along Highway ninety-nine, and then a screening around their dumpster enclosure as well. And here is the survey of the property. And then here is the site plan, and I do have a little bit more zoomed in, so as you can see, a lot of it is, a lot of site is dedicated to the parking and loading areas and connectivity throughout the site. And here are the proposed elevations for the building. And these are your possible motions, and I believe Mr. Toledo is here this evening for Thomas and Hutton. If you have any questions of him, thank you.
Okay, commissioners, do we have any questions for staff?
No.
All right, thank you, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Agent?
No questions.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Felipe Toledo, I'm with Thomas and Hutton, representing the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Toledo. Okay, commissioners, do we have any questions for Mr. Toledo? Do we have any questions?
Uh, no.
All right. Let's move right into the public hearing portion of this meeting, and I need any, anyone that's in favor of this item to step forward, please. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I need anyone to step forward that is in opposition of this item. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, we're gonna close the public portion of this agenda item, and commissioners?
I'll make comment, I was just, they're doing a lot of development out there. We got other warehouses going in, looks like it's gonna be booming out of there. We've got Buc-E's coming in also, might be the new central part of Glen County here soon. But anyway, I'd like to recommend approval of SP dash two-four dash two-seven as presented.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Commissioners, do we have any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I need everybody that's in favor. All right, Mr. Edgy, are you in favor?
I am, my proof.
Okay, I understood him to say he was in favor. Okay.
Yes, sir.
So that'll make it five, zero in favor. All right, we got that out of the way, folks. I hope everything goes as fast. All right, two point two, SP dash twenty-four dash twenty-five, one-ninety Frontage Road Site Plan. Consider site plan approval for a new four-thousand, uh, four-hundred square foot commercial office trailer and associated infrastructure at one-ninety Frontage Road, parcel zero-three dash one-six-three, seven-eight. The site is zone planned development. Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Frontage B Property LLC owner. Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. This is a site plan for one-ninety Frontage Road, and this is down at the exit twenty-nine area, kinda where McDonald's, Zaxby's is along that Frontage Road, and they are proposing a commercial parking lot as, and the site plan though is for this, for a construction trailer that they plan on having on the site for long-term use as an office. The applicant's agent has indicated in conversations with staff that their planned use here is a rental car facility, 'cause I was asking if they were planning to do any kinda overnight truck parking or anything along that nature, and they have said that it's a rental car facility, but the applicant's agent is here this, this evening if there's any changes to that plan. And they are proposing some buffers, there's actually an existing fifty-foot natural buffer plus a thirty-foot wide drainage easement that is between this site and the adjacent residential. The residential behind here is the Royal Oaks neighborhood, so there is this existing buffer that exists. And then they are proposing a type E buffer, which is a ten-foot landscaping along the Frontage Road, and then the type D screening around their dumpster. So here's a survey of the property. And then this is their proposal, so here's their access coming off this Frontage Road here. The construction trailer is this small building that you see right here, and then the rear of the property, this is what it butts, the residential, Royal Oaks. This is zoomed-in version, this is where the trailer is and their parking. And this is what they submitted as their conceptual for the trailer. And these are your possible motions, and Jake Lemmings is here from Robert Civil Engineering. If you have any questions, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Leaf. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
Sure.
All right, thank you, Ms. Leaf, you must've done a great job. No questions. All right, Mr. Lemmings?
Good afternoon, Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering. So Stephanie gave a good overview, the only thing I'll, I'll throw in there is it's actually gonna end up being a, it's an escorting service, so this is gonna be a location for customers who come into the port, that's where they're gonna go and park, meet at that facility and to be escorted over to the port, and then be brought back at the end of the day or whenever their, their business is done, drop back off and then, and then left, and then leave the, leave the site. So that's kinda, that's the use for it, so it is still the commercial, commercial parking lot, but it's more of a, a port use. And as she said, what she outlined there is what's, what's written into the PD, it's part of the master drainage plan in that area, and so I'm happy to answer any other questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lemmings. All right, commissioners?
No questions.
We don't have any questions, Mr. Lemmings, thank you. All right, folks, it's ready, it's time to open the public hearing portion of this. Item agenda, agenda item. Do I have anyone in opposition to this? Please step forward. You have five minutes to speak if you'd like to step forward. Okay, hearing none, seeing none? Do I have any, anyone in favor of this? You have five minutes to speak. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing portion of this agenda item. All right, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval of SP dash two-four dash two-five as presented.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and we have a second, all in favor. Mr. Edgy?
Yes, I approve.
Okay, so we have five, zero again in favor. All right, we're moving to two point three on our agenda. SP dash twenty-four dash twenty-six, three fifty-one Martin Palmer Drive Site Plan. Consider site plan approval for new six-hundred-and-seventy-two square foot commercial office trailer at three fifty-one Martin Palmer Drive, parcel zero-three dash one-two-six-eight-seven. The site is zone planned development. Eleanor Smiley, thirty-six-eleven, I don't even know how to pronounce that. How, how would you do that now?
Farquhar.
Farquhar?
Like, like Shrek.
Farquhar Investments LLC owner and applicant. All right, Ms. Leaf?
Okay, thank you. So this is similar to the last application, this is also a construction trailer that's planned to be used for offices, and this property is located off of Martin Palmer Drive and Southport Parkway, also down at the exit twenty-nine area. And so they are proposing, it's actually currently sitting on the site, but they're, they're asking for site plan approval for a six-hundred-and-seventy-two square foot construction trailer to serve as the office. This is an existing commercial parking lot, it's usually vehicular trucks, you know, moving vehicles to the port, that's, that's usually parked on the site, or they have vehicles from the port that are parked on the site, so that's been the use for the last probably five or so years. So back when they did establish the commercial parking lot at that time, they did install buffers, it is on the interior of the fence, there's a chain link fence, it's pretty overgrown at the site, but there, but if you look closely, the buffers are still, still there on the interior side of both the Martin Palmer and the Southport Parkway sides. And this is their plat. And this is where the trailer will be located, so this is, they have access off of both sides, and this is their access off of Martin Palmer that it's closest to. And they also have existing gatehouses at either entrance as well, or both entrances as well. And this is a photo of the trailer. And these are your possible motions, and I, I'm not sure if Miss Smiley is here this evening, or if there's another representative for the property. Have any questions?
Ms. Leaf, I do have a question for you. Go back to that trailer, please, ma'am. That is a construction mobile trailer, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Why do we have to bring folks here to question? I, I mean, th, th, this, that is ridiculous to me. We need, whatever we need to do, the county needs to do to correct this, that, those people, you should have the authority to say, okay, let's do this.
I got administrative approval.
Yes, ma'am.
We, we have talked about that, that maybe there is a, a minimum size threshold that, you know, anything like under a thousand square feet or under, you know, fifteen hundred, something like that, that this doesn't have to go before, but, yeah, currently.
That's all I have, I just wanted to, I just wanted to air that. That's crazy. We've drugged these trailers in and out of Glen County for, I've been in construction business for thirty years, I've seen a thousand of them, we've never asked for approval, and we haven't had to, that I've known of, and I don't understand why it's an issue now. That's a temporary trailer.
So that, that is a good question. So, so anything that is a temporary trailer for a construction site, so if it's a current, if it's a currently utilized construction site, we do not, you're correct, we do not have to do site plan approval for a temporary construction trailer. Their proposal for both of these projects is for these to be used long-term, you know, as far as I know, perpetuity potentially, as offices. So instead of constructing an office building, they're proposing to use these long-term, so that, that's really what, and it's not a construction site, it's a commercial site, so that's just why it's treated differently.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I am linked to this particular application right here, and if Ms. Smiley's not here, I will step down and address the commission for this project.
Okay, so, so you are recusing yourself?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can I ask Ms. Leaf a question? Just, so that just makes me think of, so do they have to meet FEMA requirements then?
Uh, they, they would, so they would have to be elevated if they are in the floodplain. I'm not sure offhand if they're in the floodplain.
Probably both of those are not, but I was just curious, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know offhand if this site is, but, but if they were in the floodplain, then, yeah, they would have to elevate above baselot elevation.
Okay.
All right, any more questions for Ms. Leaf? All right, Ms. Leaf, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
For everybody that doesn't know, this is the infamous Mr.
Mr. Gary Neville, shoot surveying. I was helped with the application on this. This is a mobile trailer that is gonna be used for meetings with the truck drivers occasionally, and that's pretty much it, is what I've been told. It sits on eight acres of well-drained concrete, so there are no drainage issues, there are no setback issues, et cetera, with this, and I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. Thank you so much. All right, commissioners? Talk to me. Sir? We got it, yep. I forgot about that. Mr. Neville shook me up. All right, folks, it's time to open the public hearing portion of this. So what we need to do is ask for anyone that's in favor of this to step forward. You have five minutes to speak in favor. Okay, hearing none, seeing none? We need to now ask anyone that is in opposition to this to step forward. You have five minutes to speak. Okay, hearing none, seeing none? We're gonna close the public hearing portion of this, and commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve SP twenty-four, twenty-six as presented.
A second.
All right, I got a motion and a second, all in favor. Mr. Edgy?
Yes.
All right, four, zero. Mr. Neville abstained.
Mr. Chairman, on this one, I need to abstain from the, abstain from the vote, this next one.
Okay, all right. Ms. New is going to abstain from CP, or two point four, CPU dash twenty-four dash seven, okay? So, CPU dash twenty-four dash seven, one-oh-one McKenzie Drive conditional use permit. Consider a request for a conditional use permit for a convenience store and fuel station, automotive, automobile service station in the Highway Commercial Zoning District. Property is located at one-oh-one McKenzie Drive and seventy-fifteen New Jessup Highway, parcel zero-three dash one-seven-six dash, or, or four-one, one-seven-six-four-one. John Prins, agent for Skopelosis Investments LLC owner. Ms. Leaf?
Okay, thank you. So this is one-oh-one McKenzie Drive, so this is at the intersection of McKenzie and New Jessup Highway and the Sterling area, it's across the street from Satilla Grocery, and it's on the road that goes to the two schools, Jane Macon and Sterling Elementary. So they are requesting, so their zone highway commercial, and the highway commercial zoning district for an automobile service station, which is a, a, a station with fuel pumps, basically a, you know, gas station, they do need to get a conditional use permit from the county in order to do that here. So that is what they're proposing, it is a circle K that they're proposing. They do have a, two full access driveways proposed, one onto three forty-one, which would be G dot approval, and then one onto McKenzie Drive. They're showing twenty-six parking spaces on the site, including ADA and truck parking. I did verify with the applicant team that they are not gonna have any overnight truck parking, so this would be, you know, truck parking for trucks getting fuel, but there wouldn't be overnight, like a travel stop or anything like that. And this is for the, for the conditional use, they will have a site plan approval that will come before the mainland planning commission at a future date, so this is purely for the use of the site as a automobile service station at this time. And this is the property where the star is located, so this is one big parcel that, that basically McKenzie Drive kinda bisects, but they are proposing the station on the southern portion, just south of McKenzie. And here's a proposed site plan, and I will note, before you have the dais tonight, the applicant team did submit a new plan, I did ask what the, the changes were, they said that their slide, there were some signage updates to the plan, and then when they, when they come up, they can address if there's anything further, but they did, they did make a couple changes, and this was submitted at the start of the meeting, so what's shown on the screen does not reflect, you know, what you have in front of you tonight. But I will note, because they will be having site plan, you know, coming at a later date, a lot of these details will really be ironed out at the site plan and then the construction plan phases that are in the future. at the site plan and then the construction plan phases that are in the future. And these are your possible actions. And happy to answer any questions? And both Sandy Owens and George Skarpalasus are here representing this application tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Leaf. Commissioners, do y'all have any questions for staff?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, let's talk to the owner and agent.
Good evening. I'm Sandy Owens with MDM Services, representing Circle K. Okay. Does anyone have questions for me?
I have, tell me, state your name again, please, ma'am.
Sandy Owens.
Ms. Owens, okay. All right, commissioners, do we have any questions for Ms. Owens?
Looks pretty straightforward, I mean.
All right, Ms. Owens, I think you did a great job.
Okay, thank you.
All right, folks, it's time to open the public hearing portion of this agenda item. So do we have anyone that would like to speak in favor of this? This agenda item is CPU dash twenty-four dash seven, one oh-one McKenzie Drive conditional use permit. Okay? I don't see anyone that would like to speak in favor. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this agenda item? Okay, I don't see anyone that would like to speak in opposition. All right, we're going to close the public hearing portion of that agenda item. And commissioners, tell me what you like or don't like.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval of CUP dash two-four dash seven as presented.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right, Mr. Edgy?
Yeah, sir, I approve.
Okay, so that'll be four to zero. Commissioner New abstained. All right, folks. I don't know why I dreaded this all day long. This is going pretty good. All right, we have two-point-five SP dash twenty-four dash two-two. One sixty-eight Petersville Road site plan. Consider site plan approval for a new RV resort and associated infrastructure at one sixty-eight Petersville Road. Partial zero-three dash one-twenty-one oh-nine. The site is zoned plan development. Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Smith &amp; Son Seafood, owner. All right, Ms. Leaf?
So this is one sixty-eight Petersville Road. So this property is at the corner of, let's see, I don't have a map in here. So this, the property is at Highway ninety-nine and Petersville, so it's close to Highway seventeen. And commissioners, you may recall, a couple of years ago, this property was before you to do an amendment to their plan development text. It was part of the very large tract on the north end of the county that was slated to be a wildlife safari park many years ago, that of course never came to fruition. And this particular piece in the PD really was, because it was supposed to be a use affiliated with the safari park, it was kind of left without really any use. So they were really in a situation where they had to amend their PD to really incorporate some uses on the site. So there's a number of uses that were included. An RV park was one of those uses, so that is what they're proposing with this application. So they were allowed to do up to five hundred RV camp sites. The density for camp sites would be fifteen sites per acre. Their current plan is less than that. They are proposing three hundred and nine RV spaces, as well as pool and resort area, walking path, golf cart rental and storage, and an office building. The property is adjacent to the historic Brunswick-Altimaha Canal. They do show some buffers. There's a fifty-foot natural buffer along Highway ninety-nine, along Petersville, and adjacent to the residential lots. And then they do show a twenty-five-foot natural buffer along the Altimaha Canal. They do have their primary access coming off of Highway ninety-nine. And again, that would need GDOT approval for any access there. They do show an emergency access coming from Petersville. In the PD, they're, they are prohibited from having their full vehicular access coming off of Petersville, you know, really to limit any, you know, impact on that residential neighborhood. But they do have the emergency access, but their primary vehicular would be off of ninety-nine. So here is their proposed site plan. It's a zoomed-in version. As you can see, they're access off of ninety-nine. And, and these are the sites. They also have some cabins out here as well, in the pool and resort area. And so they do, they did submit some digital renderings of some of their amenities. So this would be their check-in building. And again, these are conceptual, kind of their main entrance, their amenity building, and then their cottage, one of their cottages that they're proposing. And these are your possible motions. And we did receive a public comment that was included in your, in your packet with some, some concerns about this proposal. And happy to answer any questions? And Mr. Lemmings is here from Robert Civil Engineering for this application. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, do we have any questions from Ms. Leaf? Stephanie, I think you're doing a great job. Nobody's had any questions and not having. Good, good job. All right, Mr. Lemmings?
Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering. Stephanie gave a really good overview. I'll just hit on a few points here. So first, just to, you know, kind of point out where, where we are here. So this is a couple parcels down from where the Buc-E's is gonna, gonna be, to the east. Also, the, the, it's not just an RV park. This is more of a luxury RV resort is kind of what we're going for here. It's gonna be a vacation destination. There's gonna be like grand amenities, and, and you saw with those images there, just, it's gonna be a location where people want to come and not just, you know, stay for a night, but maybe stay for longer than a night, like as a, you know, vacation or so. Per, per the PD, we show the applicable buffers on the canal, as well as along the residential, the fifty-foot along the residential, and then the twenty-five-foot above, a buffer along the Altimaha Canal. As Stephanie said, density, we're allowed five hundred. We're at three oh-nine, so significantly under that. And then also, the, we have completed, which isn't required at, at this stage, but we know it's gonna be required with GDOT. As we've started coordination with GDOT on that access, we have completed a traffic study, so we have that. And the improvements required on Highway ninety-nine is gonna be a deceleration lane and two, a two-way, so one in, one out. And then our development, we actually show more than that, just to, so, to have easier access into the property for the RVs, RVs, and then also, you know, automobiles and stuff that, so they don't get backed up at the gate. Also, this, this development is, you know, the roadways within the development are intended to be private, as, as shown on the plan here. We're gonna be connecting to the, you know, joint water and sewer, which is near the Altimaha Canal. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
You said you do have DOT approval for the ninety-nine?
So we're working on the DOT approval right now.
Concerning tracks two and three, that front on that, I guess there will be access through the main entrance that's there now?
That's correct.
I saw the stub streets out there.
That's right. That, that access is gonna be, that's gonna be the primary access, and GDOT, GDOT's not gonna have any other access there. That's right.
No more questions? Mr. Lemmings?
Yes, sir.
We don't have an RV park in Glen County that is to the scale of this, do we?
No.
I would say coastal, maybe coastal Georgia RV park, Mr. Earl Perry's would be the closest thing that we have to this. This is one step further than that, the point I'm trying to make.
Yes, sir.
Do you, have you done, I, I, this is totally the curiosity on my part. Have you done a cost analysis of, of what something like this would cost?
So I haven't. I'm sure the, the owner and the developer of this property is here, and I'm sure, I'm sure they have, but...
I mean, the pictures you showed me look like something I would see in Orlando.
Right. Yeah.
And, and, and I mean, we, we want that here.
Oh, it's gonna be a very nice resort, absolutely.
I, I, I mean, I love that.
Yeah.
That's what, the type of stuff we need in Glen County.
Right.
So that's very intriguing to me. That's just a point I wanted to make to you.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, do we have any more questions for Mr. Lemmings? Thank you so much, sir. All right, it's time to open the public hearing portion of this item, agenda number SP dash twenty-four dash two-two, one sixty-eight Petersville Road site plan. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this?
Mr. Broderick, thank you for your time and thank you counsel. I am to develop with Brighton Real Estate Ventures. We're excited to be here, and excited to be in Glen County. I'm a Georgia native, so I'm happy to be here. This was an opportunity for us to plant our feet on the ground in Glen County and bring a nice luxury amenity here. You asked about cost. The cost is still incoming. Obviously, this is a very nice RV park, but you can expect between forty and sixty million dollar investment on that piece of property. So significant investment, significant industry. We'll come around that significant tax dollars will be recognized based off of this. And the rental rates on this won't be astronomical. It will be affordable, but there's different scales of rental on this property. There's proposed in here between thirty and sixty casitas, which is little one- and two-bedroom overnight cottages you can stay in. If you don't have an RV, you can come here and stay. If you, also, you can rent an RV on-site. We're proposing actually bringing RVs to the site that you can rent instead of having to bring your own, but you'll also be able to bring your motorcoaches in as well. There's nine sites on here that are luxury motorcoaches. They have motorcoach spots. They have hot tubs, they have fire pits, they have cabanas. I mean, so this is not your everyday RV park. You can expect this to be one of the highest and nicest RV parks in the state of Georgia.
I, I, I could tell that, sir. And that's the reason why I brought it.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I just wanted it brought to the people's attention, what possibly could come to our community.
Yeah. And, and we've really thought through this. We really want to see this happen. We think this is a great location for the growth of Glen County, going kind of northward. We feel like this is a great opportunity. It's great for the Golden Isles, it's great for Jekyll Island, Seattle, and all those areas, because they can go vacation, they can go visit. They'll be part of the tourism community, but it also helps flexi as well. It gives flexi some opportunity for people to have RVs or campers that want to come down and stay for their training, or they can rent an RV on-site or casino on-site. So don't, not only do we want to capture the travelers up and down nine ninety-five and destination, but we also want to capture the people that have to come here and work, whether it be a pork worker, or whether it be a flexi trainee. We want to have a multiple-use RV park that's comfortable for everybody. There will be food and beverage served on-site, and there will be opportunity to rent out the venue. There's gonna be about a six thousand square foot clubhouse that will have food and beverage and restaurant. So there, there is some amenities that could be opened to the public at some point. It is a private luxury RV park, but there is potentially gonna be some opportunities that the public could rent the space for maybe a birthday party or anniversary party or some type of event, because there will be food and beverage. So we've kind of planned that the community will have some involvement here as well. Happy to answer any more questions, if you guys have any.
I do have one more question for you, sir. On a personal note, again.
Sure.
You, you said that your business, tell me, tell me what your business is.
Brighton Real Estate Ventures.
Okay. Do you have other facilities like this?
This would be the first of its kind.
Yes, sir.
So we do not currently have any like this. We're, we're in the development business, but this is our new model of what we're planning to do. And we have other sites located that are not in this vicinity that'll be up and down the coastline.
Thank you so much. And, and thank you for taking interest in Glen County.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for having us.
All right, commissioners, do we have any questions for the agent?
Not sure.
All right, perfect. All right, it's time to open the public portion, the public hearing portion of this. So this item number is SP dash twenty-four dash two-two. Anyone that would like to speak in favor of this, which I've already asked for, if anyone else would like to speak in favor, please step forward. Okay? Hearing none, seeing none? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of this? Okay? If, if we have more than one person, I just need you to come up one at a time, obviously, and you have five minutes to speak. So ma'am, you was up first. Come, come, come straight forward.
My name is Cheryl Cunningham, and I'm a thirty-four-year resident of Heritage Estates, which is the subdivision directly across from the main entrance. And we do have some concerns, but over the past two years, we have lost some residents, so I'm ended up being the one who ends up here. I understand that it's Glen County's goal to make transition from undeveloped to fully-developed areas a smooth one, and that you want to provide a safe and favorable experience for all the community. But there are concerns. The one question I've had that I've asked over and over again is the, it clearly states in the Glen County ordinance and in the zoning map for this property that it is on to, on a paved access to an arterial road. And the DOT clearly classed this road as a collector road. And I need that question answered for my satisfaction. Per the site plan, the entrance to the RV park is a critical issue with the residents directly across from it. We have one house that is directly facing the entrance to the RV park, with their living room would be to the front, to that entrance. The entrance would be about sixty-foot wide with twenty-four feet of roadway, a median, and shoulders. An example in the packet shows a three-story building that looks out directly into the subdivision. Since it can be viewed for the patrons as they pull into the park to passerby's as they drive by, it is twenty-four-seven to the residents of the subdivision. And we would ask that if this is approved, that we look at maybe a redesign, the height of the buildings? What's its purpose? Is it a man entrance gate, access control, or observation tower? Are, are they gonna allow people in there where they could actually look into our subdivision from that tower? Those are just some questions. The site plan places the RV activity away from the existing subdivision, which is a good thing. I think the planning of the, of the site plan is good, other than the entryway. I do want to ask one question. An access point has already been placed on ninety-nine across from Comanche Road. There were no signs from the Georgia DOT, and I would like to know if there was approval for that access road to be, access point to be built? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, would you?
I did have nine questions that were supposed to be part of public records. And I don't know if they, I tried to send it and I couldn't.
We, we, I think we got them, didn't we, Ms. Leaf? Ma'am, would you please state your name one more time?
Cheryl Cunningham.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. All right, anyone else would like to speak in opposition? Okay, it looks like Ms. Cunningham is it. Mr. Agent, would you like to come up and answer any of her concerns or questions to the best of your abilities?
Yes, sir, I have to do it. So the, the three-story, I know the, the image looked high, but we, there's a height requirement in the PD that we have to abide by. So we're gonna make sure that we abide by the, the proper heights. The, the, the entrance buildings are more of a, you know, an amenity and an entrance and a visual effect, more than folks be, or they're not gonna be staying up there, you know, looking out windows, looking onto the neighbors, anything like that. It's more of just a, you know, an, an entrance to the development. The, in no particular order, the, the driveway she's talking about was a temporary access that was done by the owner of the property, not by the, the developer. But that was permitted through GDOT. And Vernon Cruz, if she wanted to reach out, is a local GDOT contact who met on-site to approve that, that temporary driveway pipe. The access points and, and the zoning master plan on the exhibit A dash two, it shows, it shows the three access points. it shows, it shows the, uh, three access points to this property, and two of them are shown on, on Georgia ninety-nine, on Highway ninety-nine, and, and then there's that, that other one on, on the Petersville Road, which is gonna be that gated emergency-only access. Um, and then, let's see. I'm, I'm reading through her, her email here that, make sure I hit everything. I think, I think that's it.
Good. But, thank, thank you, Mr. Lemmings. Do we have any, um, questions for Mr. Lemmings, Commissioners?
Maybe not for, uh, Jake, but she did ask about the arterial road and collector road classification on this.
I think that would be a question for the DOT.
Well, that, that is a main road. I would think it's
Ninety-nine would be a main road.
More of an arterial than a collector. I don't know that all streets in Glen County are classified correctly.
I, I would think it would be a main road if Buc-E's was gonna come on and off of it. That would just be my opinion now.
Yeah, it's a little more than a collector. So, anyway.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the, the type of roadway that it is, but I know that, you know, in that exhibit, it calls out the, the three access points, and it, it states those locations, and two of them are on ninety-nine. But that's all I had to add to that.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Lemmings.
Yes, sir.
Um, I have actually not closed the public portion hearing of that. Ms. Cunningham, would you have one more thing you'd like to say?
Yes, we have looked at both the bats.
Come, please come up.
Both the bats and the Georgia DOT class this road as a collector. It is a collector all the way over to three forty-one, and the bridge over ninety-five is on the, is called the Collector Bridge. I just spent time going through the public hearing on the bridge, roundabouts that are being built, the three roundabouts on either end of the bridge and at Buc-E's. And they state clearly in the papers they sent to us, it is a collector road. And that's Georgia DOT. I don't know that I have the papers with me this time. I handed it all to you when we did this in two thousand twenty-two, and it was a collector road then, it's a collector road now.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
So, I mean, that, I mean, that's clear from the DOT, because I go in the site and check it every month.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions for anybody? Uh, it's time to close the public, uh, hearing portion of this. Uh, we, we got everyone in favor to speak for, and we got every person that was in opposition to speak. Commissioners?
Uh, well, I just have a quick question, um, not being familiar with everything that she just referenced. Is the DOT's definition of a collector road the same as Glen County's?
So, my understanding is that Glen County does base our classifications off of GDOT's classifications, so.
For all the roads in Glen County.
Yeah, and I can confirm that with our traffic engineer, um, but that's my understanding, is that's what ours are based off of.
Just curious whether that could be the difference.
I, I understand that, um, and I, I think that more than likely, this is just a formality at this point to call that a collector road. Uh, that, that sticks in to be a major thoroughfare in Glen County, whether we like it or not. That's what's gonna happen here. So, I, I think we're splitting hairs here about a collector road. So, Commissioners, um, if there's in, no more questions, I need to move. All right, I'll do it. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to accept SP dash twenty-four dash two-two as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. You okay, Mr. Neville?
I do.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right, Mr. Edgy?
I approve.
All right, uh, that is five-zero. All right, it's time to move to item two-point-six on our agenda item, ZM dash twenty-four dash nine, eight fifty Myers Hill Road rezoned. Consider a request to rezone two parcels located off of Myers Hill Road and Lakes Drive, parcel zero-two dash zero-two-one-eight-one and zero-two dash zero-one-two-oh-seven. Parcel zero-two oh-two-one-eight-one addressed as eight fifty Myers Hill Road is approximately a hundred and eighty-nine acres and zone plan development district ZM two zero-zero-six dash zero-three-four. The planned development is proposed to be amended to modify density and residential development type. Parcel zero-two dash zero-one-two-oh-seven is addressed, is a, is unaddressed, I'm sorry, is approximately eighty-two acres and zone forest agricultural and proposed to rezone to planned development district and will be part of the same planned development as parcel zero-two dash zero-two-one-eight-one. The proposed use is family, is single-family dwelling and townhomes. Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Laura Ebert and Anna Wheeler owners. I don't know about y'all, but that was pretty confusing to me. Hell, that was confusing to read, much less to understand. All right, Ms. Leaf.
All right, thank you. So, I'll, I'll try to break it down a little bit, 'cause there is, there's a kind of a lot of different moving parts with this application. So, uh, there are two separate parcels, um, as the chairman, uh, out discussed. Uh, so, this, this top parcel, zero-two dash zero-two-one-eight-one is, um, is this larger tract up here. Um, it basically is kind of a flag lot that comes off of Myers Hill. Uh, this is, this is that exit twenty-nine area, um, off of Highway eighty-two. So, it is kind of a flag lot that's off of Myers Hill. Um, this parcel also touches the public right-of-way of the Lakes Drive, which comes directly off of eighty-two. Uh, the second, and this, this parcel is zone plan development currently. The second parcel is this smaller one here, zero-two dash zero-one-two-zero-seven. And this parcel is essentially, essentially landlocked, except it does have an access easement. So, it has an access easement off of Myers Hill, so it's not landlocked, but it, it does, um, it does need to access off of Myers Hill, you know, kind of through this other parcel. So, these are both owned by the same party currently. Uh, but there's no other access except for this Myers Hill access easement for this parcel here. Uh, so, this, uh, just shows a zoning map of these parcels as well as the surrounding. Uh, so, the, the PD is this larger parcel here that was, um, zone plan development district back in two thousand and six. And then, uh, where the other star is located, um, is currently zoned forest agricultural. And the, the green that you see around it, um, this is all forest agricultural zoning predominantly in this area. So, just to kind of break it down a little more, so, the larger parcel that is this flag lot off of Myers Hill that's addressed as eight fifty Myers Hill, it is one hundred and eighty-nine acres. Um, it was zoned PD in two thousand and six. And the current density that's allowed under the PD that was done in two thousand and six um, is a maximum of two hundred and fifty lots. Uh, only single-family residential is allowed on the site, so no other types, so just single-family residential. And the minimum lot size would be eight thousand acres. I'm sorry, eight thousand square feet, not acres. Uh, the minimum lot size is eight thousand square feet, uh, and a max of two fifty lots. So, and what they're proposing on this parcel is to amend the PD to modify the density and allow, you know, single-family plus townhomes, and the lot size would reduce to seven thousand square feet for the single-family, and then townhomes would be allowed at sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred square feet. All right, so then the other parcel, that is the one that has the access easement coming off of Myers Hill, is a smaller of the two, is eighty-two acres, currently zoned forest agricultural. Uh, forest agricultural, um, allows a half-acre lot if, uh, there's, um, public water and sewer and, uh, I'm sorry, septic, public water and septic. Um, if they have a well and septic, there would need to be one-acre lots. Um, there is public water availability on Myers Hill, but there is no sewer in that location currently. Uh, so, their proposal here is to rezone from FA to planned development district um, to have the same development standards as the adjacent property. So, both these parcels would be, parcels would kind of merge into one planned development text. Uh, they would have single-family dwellings and townhomes. Um, the maximum density proposed is four hundred and fifty units, three hundred single-family, and one hundred and fifty townho, one hundred and fifty townhome units. The single-family lot size would be seven thousand square feet. Lot size for townhomes would be sixteen hundred square feet. And I will note, um, in conversations with the, the applicant's agent today, um, they have been taking kind of another look at this based on some of the public comments that they have been receiving, and so the applicant's agent will, will talk a little bit more about some of their thoughts with this, but currently, this is what was proposed and what was noticed for tonight's meeting. Uh, so, what we also look at with any reason request is a comprehensive plan. Um, this is the southwest, um, southwest Glen area. Uh, this property, um, essentially is in compliance. Um, this is a pretty, uh, pretty broad area. There's a mix of, you know, kind of commercial and workforce housing that's kind of encouraged in this area. So, um, so generally, it is compliant. Um, you know, some of the guiding, I guess, guidance in the comprehensive plan for this area is to, you know, look a little bit more of a master plan situation with some trails and some amenities and, you know, encouraging density around the existing commercial and where there is higher density now. So, that's really some, you know, kind of the guiding language for this area in the comp plan. So, this is a survey of the property, and then this is their master plan that, um, they are required to include with a planned development text. And so, um, this is a copy of their master plan that shows, um, you know, how this is kind of a master plan site between the two different parcels and where they would have the single-family homes, where they, where they would have the townhomes. And just kind of a zoomed-in version, if you wanted to look a little closely at anything. Uh, they are showing two different access points. Um, one is off of Myers Hill Road where that existing, you know, flag lot kind of is now. And then the other access, it's right here, um, the other access is off of the Lakes Drive. Um, currently, there's a, an easement called Harmony Lane that's there, so that's generally the area that, that it, that comes into the property um, off of the Lakes Drive, off of eighty-two. So, these are your possible motions, and this is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And, uh, Mr. Lemmings from Robert Civil Engineering is here for this application tonight. Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have any questions from Ms. Leaf? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lemmings.
Jake Lemmings with Robert Civil Engineering. Um, so, the first thing, uh, I hope in y'all's packet, I think it was online. This is the, that's a good talking point, though. This was the original concept that was put together. Um, and then we, we actually had a conversation, and the owner of the property is here and available to answer questions tonight as well, and happy to. Um, uh, but Steve, the owner, ended up, uh, reaching out to the lakes and their representative, and we had a meeting with them to go over this concept, which was the initial concept. And, and from there, obviously, there was some current concern they had with some of the existing drainage, um, issues that the lakes are facing. Um, and so, we went back to the drawing board based on that and also, uh, the townhomes that were backing up to the single-family over here. Um, so, we went back to the drawing board, and, um, one of their main concerns is obviously drainage. So, we, uh, Steve hired us to do a preliminary drainage analysis on the site and, and which y'all probably see the revised concept in your packet. I guess it's not in the packet here. Um, but I think it was online, and, and I hope the, the locals received that, saw that. But ultimately, what that ended up doing was modifying this layout and reducing the density that was even more to, um, take into account the, the ponds that were needed for all the off-site water that was coming through. Um, 'cause of the lakes, a lot of the water comes through between, uh, Michigan Way and the Lakes Drive and kind of, uh, flows back up through some ditches, and obviously, there's wetlands in here, and these wetlands are, uh, have been delineated and surveyed, so these are accurate wetlands that are shown. Um, and the drainage ultimately ends up going back up, crossing, um, eighty-two and then crossing the railroad track and getting back over to the railroad track. And from my understanding, we're talking with some folks at the county, I believe, uh, you know, pinch point on drainage is at the railroad track, and I think that's a capital project that's coming to kind of improve that drainage. So, hopefully, that'll end up helping this area even more than, than what we're proposing on the site. Um, so, right now, the updated concept, this pond here is much larger. All of these lots are, are, um, mostly gone here, and we have a, there's a, actually a ten-acre pond, um, based on the, the flows that we have going through there. And we have the ponds sized at a, um, at actually the, per the drainage ordinance um, in Glen County have to design for the fifty-year, and, and, uh, our ponds are actually designed for the hundred-year. So, we're taking those into account because we understand the drainage concerns in the area. Um, so, the, so the drainage has been looked at and vetted a lot harder at the zoning phase than actually required. Um, I understand that, you know, the, with, there was a meeting that was, um, held, um, for the community on Myers Hill uh, a few days ago, and I was able to talk with one of the representatives and, and, uh, the good thing, Steve, the owner, he is, um, he wants to be a good neighbor, and, uh, so, we wanna hear everybody's comments tonight. Obviously, there's a lot of people here to talk about this, and we understand that townhomes are an issue. Um, obviously, we've already phased back once kind of what was the initial plan, um, and then, you know, phased back and, and, and shown even less density than what we had. Ultimately, the way we came to what our density number is, is technically a little bit higher, and we, through, um, conversations with, with, uh, with Jimmy, and he'll speak to that tonight, I'm sure, is, you know, the PD, the existing PD calls out, it's two-point-two units per acre based on the upland area is how they got to that two hundred and fifty, um, unit max. And so, we, we, after talking with the, with the locals, that's something that I understand is important to at least keep the same density that was proposed originally. And bringing in this, this, uh, FA tract into this, you know, if we kept that two-point-two, and then also, you know, looking at the townhomes, we know that's a, a, a big issue for a lot of folks. So, the owner's willing to scratch the townhome, so there's some things we need to go back to the drawing board for. And obviously, after we hear some, uh, comments tonight, there's gonna be more things that we need to, to hear about and potentially address, and, and we'd love to, you know, stay after and talk to folks more and really hear from the locals on, on what they really wanna see, and I'm sure we'll hear that tonight. Um, but we know we're gonna need to go back to the drawing board and get something that works best for everyone. Uh, uh, so, at the end of this meeting, I'd like to defer, uh, we still wanna go through the public process, but we'd like to defer to be able to go back to the drawing board, get something that works for everyone. 'Cause a big driving point for this development is, the reason the units are necessary is, like Stephanie said, right now, you're required to have a half-acre lots because you'd have to do, there's no, there's no, um, septic in the area. So, we're talking with Joint Water and Sewer. The closest station that we could connect to is Majestic Oaks. Majestic Oaks is completely tapped out. It's not happening. Um, so, they said there's a sixteen-inch forest main on Buck Swamp that we can connect to, and they're encouraging us, encouraging us to connect there, um, because it needs the flood. So, to do that, it would be a one-point-two-mile forest main run, which is a reason that the unit count is important, but we understand density is important to the locals. So, we wanna find something that works good for everyone, kind of go back to the drawing board, find a layout that works with the numbers that we have to hit to, you know, for the, to be feasible. And, uh, so with that, that's kind of where, where we are, and, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure I'll answer some after folks come up.
Thank you, Mr. Lemmings.
Yes, sir.
So, may I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Sure. Um, so, just to make sure I have it right, you're, you're, um, are open today to the, sticking to the two-point-two per upload, upland acre?
I, I know that's, that's, from what I'm hearing, that's important to them. So, yeah, we're, we're willing to do that. Um, we would like to go back and kind of sketch in based on that to see what it, it puts us at, um, to see how else we need to adjust. Um, but yeah, at this point, that's something we're, we're gonna look into doing, and we're willing to do.
That one's?
Willing to, willing to do that and, um, and also scratch the townhomes.
Okay, thanks.
So, Mr. Lemmings, I have a question, and, and. we already know on a hundred and eighty-nine acres, we already know exactly what you can put there, correct?
We do. So it comes out to, uh, based on the upland area that we have, it comes out to two hundred and ninety-two, which is what we're showing in the, um, in the latest concept plan.
Two hundred and ninety-two single family homes.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's based on the, yeah, that's based on the density.
If you kept everything the same for the eighty-two acres, what would that give us another?
Uh, depending on the layout and what we can fit in, if you're just looking at density, we haven't laid the layout yet. That's one thing we'll have to look at after this meeting. But if you kept the two point two based on the upland area we have, it would be around four hundred and seven single family.
Okay. That's all I have.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, uh, Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Lemmings? All right, folks, um, real, real quickly, how many people are here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition of this request, which is eight fifty Myers Hill? So wait, 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 I'm just trying to figure out. Okay. So maybe a half dozen or so. All right, I just didn't want everybody in the room that, that we've, we've came to some kind of a compromise here, um, you know, and, and they're deferring. Uh, the folks do have a right to develop their property. And the county and the Mainland Planning Commission has a little bit of leverage here because they are asking for a rezone, but they do have the right to develop their property. So I just want everybody to understand that. And, and, and I do want you to kind of consider, if you own this property, would you not want to be able to develop it? And I know we, I've, I've probably lived in this area more than most of you folks have. A, a, and it's, it's very, it's very, um, you know, it, it's heart wrenching when we see something like this happen in our community. And, uh, that, that's all, I just wanted to know how many people, um, how many people wanted to actually get up here and speak and may, maybe we won't be here till twelve o'clock tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think, uh, Mr. Jimmy Arnold is a representative of some of them and he can, I don't know if you want to let him go first, that might take care of some of the other comments, the other people have. Or not, if, either way.
Yeah, no problem, Mr. Arnold. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank, thank you so much. Um, all right, folks, we're going to start the public hearing portion of this. And, um, anyone that would like to speak in favor for this, please step forward.
Hello, bigger in real life. I'm Steve Ebert and I'm the, um, condemned one. But anyhow, um, I just wanted to let you guys know that essentially what's happening here is happening in the area. I live outside of Athens. And, um, and what we've done is we've created an atmosphere where there's no affordable housing. And so, um, the whole objective is, my daughter lives in Birmingham on a, uh, in a home on a seven thousand square foot lot. And it's all she could afford. She's a nurse and her husband works for UPS. So the whole objective is just to try to create some affordable housing in this area. And I understand how everybody feels about it, that, you know, I'm no different than y'all are. We all think, you know, not in my backyard. I don't mind if you do it down the road, but not in my backyard. And, and I understand that and, and that's why I'm willing to concede the townhouses and try to figure out how to get the density to work to, so that I can justify the sewer, trying to get the sewer to it, because a mile and two tenths is a long ways to run it. And the county needs the sewer used too. And so anyhow, um, I'll be willing to answer any questions or anything that you guys have.
Thank you, Mr. Ebert.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you so much, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, folks, we're going to open the public hearing portion of, uh, Z M dash twenty-four dash nine, eight fifty Myers Hill Road. Uh, I, like I said, I asked for Mr. Ebert and only one person stood up for in favor. So let's have all the opposition, one at the time, come up, please.
Good evening. Uh, I appreciate, uh, the, uh, board members allowing us the opportunity to speak on behalf of this rezoning request.
Sir.
My name.
Yes, sir.
My name is Mance Malino. I'm the president of the Tri-Area Association of Brunswick, which includes Brookman, Fancy Bluff, and Buck Swamp. Basically, I, I had a whole, you know, uh, rendition that I was going to do on why this, uh, rezoning should not go forth. And I guess because you saw all of our, our neighbors here, you just decided not to go forth with it. And I appreciate that, uh, uh, sir. But I would like for all of our members, our neighbors, to stand for just a second so that the commission can get a look at how important this, this, uh, item is. And you may be seated. Thank you. I'm representing these residents in the Brookman area. And, uh, the request that's being permitted at this time, uh, it, it's concerning. Now, I understand that progress must go on. Progress is going to happen. I was born here in nineteen sixty-two at Brunswick Memorial Hospital. Came home to my parents' home. They brought me home. They, they had a house, little house on, uh, seventeen, you know, where the old Crystals is. That was my parents' home. And they were moved out because I ninety-five was built. So that's how long we're talking, okay? And we understand that progress mu- must happen. But progress must be, there must always be, it must take into account what's already there. Everyone either has grown up there or has bought into that area because of its low density. And I understand that the owners and the developer, they're talking about the density, but are they really? Even with four hundred houses, we've in, in the last five years have had, what, three deaths on Myers Hill Road. Okay, with what we have now. Now you're going to add and estimate, if you've got four, you're talking about nine thousand people, maybe something like that. If you do, if you run the numbers. Now they've got to have, you've got two access points. One is at the lakes, one is on Myers Hill, Hill, Hill Road. It's you, it's your family, families that are trying to get to work and to school. And I'm in a rush. So what happens? Okay, more accidents, more hard feelings, more folks arguing because you pulled out in front of me. You know, these are the things that must be taken into consideration when this board decides to approve this project, approve the rezoning or, or not approve the rezoning. And I'm not going to take up much time because I've got a gentleman here who is a, a firebrand boss. Let me just put it like that. Uh, Jimmy is going to come up and give you some details. I'm not going to, you know, I could, I could tell you about what I like. I like the, because I've lived in Savannah for twenty-seven years. I came back home to, to have the low density, the quiet life, to be able to see the deers running, the deer running and, uh, and to be chased by the wild hogs like I did when I was a young boy and to kill a, kill a rattlesnake. I could tell you all of that and tell you how country I really am, but I'm not going to do that. You know, I'm going to let Jimmy do that, okay? But I thank you for the time and I ask you please to deny the rezoning request at least. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. Next person in opposition.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. My name is, uh, Stephen Archibald. I live in the Lakes, um, subdivision and I want to speak mainly on two points, uh, that I have just personal experience with and I've just living there for, uh, almost nine years now. When we moved there, um, there was no construction. I mean, the people that had been there already, um, you know, there was about half maybe of the current residents that live there. Since then, it's doubled in population. Um, but with that said, uh, every, every parcel is around a half an acre or more. Um, because the zoning, to my understanding, is FA. So over the years, I've learned, yeah, this was a very low swampy area, probably should have never been built on in the first place. And the reason being is the darn place floods, right? It floods. I have many photographs. Uh, I didn't provide them tonight, but easily documented and known to, I know members of this board that, uh, the place floods. Um, over people's driveways, over their, the ditches. The county doesn't, uh, maintain the ditches at all, um, which creates a lot of backup. The retention ponds really don't retain anything. They just overflow and the water keeps on going. Um, the one gentleman spoke to the pinch point underneath the railroad tracks, totally inadequate for draining what is currently in place right now. So I can speak to that, uh, you know, firsthand, that, uh, the drainage area in the, in the lakes is just untenable at best. We've had a wet summer this year, we all know that. Um, but it's not that unusual. In July, we had over twelve inches of rain. In August, over sixteen inches of rain. I mean, it's not that unusual, but with that comes flooding. This is not an abnormal situation. This is not a hurricane. This is not anything. This is just heavy rain. So, uh, you know, to mitigate that, with all due respect, you know, building retention ponds and, you know, trying to work around these wetlands, it, it does not, it just doesn't work that way. The water is going to move. And so, and I think Jimmy will speak to this further, um, about just the overall continuity of that entire area. You want to whack it up into different parcels and so forth. But it's one big area at the end of the day. Um, we're all putting houses on. The other thing that I wanted to come up and speak to is, uh, personally, um, I was a city of Philadelphia firefighter and officer for over thirty-two years. So I have firsthand in, you know, experience of my career, uh, being a firefighter. I was in touch with the chief of Glen County Fire Department, asked him for some numbers, for some information about what's happening with our current department. I went to the local engine six around the corner from my house, spoke to those guys. Um, and earlier this year, uh, I, I witnessed tragically the loss of a home in our neighborhood. A, a, a home that was only three or four years old. I mean, it was not an older house. Perfect day, middle of the day, um, the department responded. And at the best of their ability, they still lost this house. I mean, so I had this conversation with the chief, like, what happened? And he educated me, we are woefully understaffed, uh, in, with the fire department. One engine, engine six consists of a driver and an officer. And the ambulance that is, if they're in quarters, together make up one engine company. If the ambulance is out, they literally show up with two guys. You, this, that, and then you're waiting for other responding trucks to show up. That's why they lost that house. You takes people and equipment to put out a structured fire, just flat out. Then I learned there's over a hundred and thirty-six square miles that this one engine company covers. You know, from, 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 um, the bridge all the way to county line. They're first in. Like, if they're anywhere out and about in the county. So all that to say, greater density of population, the greater need for fire police and obviously, um, EMS. I mean, all of that is just numbers. It adds up, more people, more services. And unfortunately, history shows us government is reactive and not proactive. So, you know, the numbers don't add up at the moment and say, oh, we qualify for another fire truck. No, let's get the one we have adequately staffed. I mean, that would be a start, just to say, you know. But, um, but those are the two things I would really want to speak to. Um, and I know Jimmy's going to speak, you know, to the other things, but I can definitely give you that personally, that's my personal experience, so.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. All right, anyone else would like to speak in opposition? All right, Mr. Arnold. I've been waiting on it.
I can see the anticipation. So thank you, uh, for everyone allowing us to be here this evening and good evening. And, um, I'm Jimmy Arnold, I'm a local landowner with large acreage off of Myers Hill Road. And, uh, do want to thank the planning commission for allowing, uh, me and all of us, uh, on our Myers Hill and Lake, uh, communities to speak this evening on all of our concerns regarding the development of eight fifty Myers Hill Road, um, you know, and the impacts to us as a community as a whole. Uh, I do want to start off by saying too, uh, I want to thank Steve and Jake for all of their conversations over the last two days and, uh, the willingness to consider the compromises. Uh, you know, the thing about it is, we, we may not make everybody happy on both sides, but again, they are listening and again, I do want to thank them for that. So for everybody that's in the room, we've had some really good conversations and I think we can definitely find some compromise, so. Um, as a local business owner in Glen County, I will start by saying that I'm not against development. Uh, so I'm not up here saying, and I've, I've said it to many already in this room, uh, this is not about stopping the development. Um, you know, we, we understand the development will continue in some form, shape, form or fashion. But, uh, however, I and many others in the room believe in sound and responsible development for our community, uh, with positive impacts. We're here to discuss the proposal of the zoning ordinance change in our rural area. The developers, uh, are seeking to rezone these tracks to allow for high density neighborhood, which would bring in significant changes to our landscape, infrastructure and way of life. The proposal has the potential to affect many aspects of our daily lives. And several, uh, of the concerns are increased traffic flow, noise levels, drainage, uh, water drainage particularly in some of these, uh, other neighborhoods, uh, the availability of local resources, crime, safety for our children using Baldwin Park and a large enough buffer for the Lakes community. This is a collection and what I'm kind of going over is a collection of thoughts and concerns from most everyone in the room and others, uh, that, uh, may, may not be here tonight, so. Um, as neighbors, we know how important it is to preserve the unique character and history and tranquility of our area. Our goal today is to review, obviously, the details of the proposal, which have already been laid out, but to explore the impacts of our community and ensure that we have a voice in this process. Um, I won't go back over the description, you know, of the properties, obviously, it's already been stated. Uh, so I'll skip that and, uh, for the sake of time. To, uh, kind of cover the, you know, if you look at this currently as it stands and even if there were revisions, but assuming these houses have a, uh, average of two point six people per home, which is the current Georgia average, this neighborhood would have around twelve hundred and thirty residents as it currently stands, each household having two cars potentially. Uh, that would add almost a thousand cars onto Myers Hill Road and the Lakes Drive, uh, or Lakes Drive. Um, so again, you know, tremendous issues there. Uh, as we know, Myers Hill is an extremely narrow road. Uh, we currently have, you know, quite a few speeders on the road as well. Uh, so that, that definitely is a concern. I do want to touch on, uh, and one of the main things that I had mentioned to everybody was talking really about the comprehensive plan. And I know, uh, Ms. Leaf had already touched on a portion of that, but I think there's other things that need to be noted, uh, that were, you know, not mentioned. Uh, and I have said this to others in the room. Um, this comprehensive plan that, uh, obviously is developed, uh, you know, every ten years for the Department of Community Affairs. Uh, Glen County's, uh, development strategy, uh, for our area, uh, clearly states in the twenty eighteen and revised twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan six point three point one two Southwest Glen. This area includes part of the unincorporated Glen County that is bounded, uh, primarily by Fancy Bluff Creek, Highway ninety-nine, Rosier Road and Glen County, uh, boundary with Camden County. It contains a mix of uses, but is primarily low density residential. Do want to stress that. And this is in comprehensive plan. There's also limited commercial development on, along the major thoroughfares. This area has seen significant growth in recent years and there continues to be development pressure to develop more intense commercial establishments and newer multifamily, uh, medium density residential developments to accommodate workforce housing. and newer multifamily, medium-density residential developments to accommodate workforce housing for those traveling US 17 to work, to the port, Brunswick, or either Jekyll or St. Simon's Island. The area is adjacent to Exit 29, community gateway areas, and therefore does experience impact from associated heavy commercial truck-oriented uses. There's a need to provide community amenities, services, sidewalk connections, I'm sorry, sidewalk trail connections for the growing residential community located here. The major thoroughfares, including Highway 82, have the potential to service future employment and commercial areas. There is some concern, I do want to stress this, there's some concern regarding the suitability of soil for future development in parts of the character area. So, again, obviously drainage being one of the biggest concerns of everyone in the community here represented tonight, so. And I think, again, making note of that, you know, in the comprehensive plan, you know, some of the concerns of the suitability of development, you know, in Southwest Glen. Development strategies, again, this is all part of the comprehensive plan. Promote low to moderate-density residential subdivisions in traditional neighborhood development style, or the conservation subdivision cluster development style. New development should be a master plan with mixed uses blending residential development with schools, parks, recreation, neighborhood, retail businesses and services linked in a compact pattern that enables walking and biking. Consider providing use of golf carts where appropriate. Obviously, out there, and I know that this came up in the meeting on Monday night, there's quite a few, you know, that move up and down Myers Hill Road on golf carts, side-by-sides, you know. So, again, part of the rural community out there. Let's see. Separate and buffer transients uses associated with truck traffic in Exit 29 reduce impacts of truck traffic on surrounding development. Ensure the new development does not adversely impact sensitive natural features of this area. The number and variety of zoning categories included in this character area demonstrate the need for a future master plan, perhaps in association with Exit 29, community gateway plan. Desired future land uses should not conflict with neighborhoods and schools in the area. Where possible, medium-density residential development should be concentrated near commercial developments. Non-motorized access should be expanded to limit unnecessary motorized travel along already heavily trafficked roads. All of these statements I've mentioned are in our 2018 and revised 2023 Glen County Comprehensive Plan for Southwest Glen County. Allowing a property that is zoned FA in a traditionally rural area of our county into high-density completely concentrates this strategy. If the rezoning goes forward, it could definitely set a precedent, starting with Slippery Slope, you know, far beyond just Myers Hill and the Lakes. Again, I do want to stress that, you know, the compromises that have been discussed, and do thank them, you know, for that and that consideration. Under 6.4, under the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, summary of land use and goals. It is the intent of these character areas and the associated narratives and zoning permissions to provide Glen County with a guiding framework for the future development decisions within the county. This allows the county to visualize expected growth patterns, encourage and accommodate new developments in areas identified while addressing the concerns of the citizens about uncontrolled and unmanaged growth. While not all future developments can be anticipated over a five-year timeframe, it is crucial that the planning and development following the designations identified in their respective character areas and plans. In addition to these broad land use goals, identified updates to zoning requirements and general beautification of areas will add character to the county, focusing on preservation of open areas, non-motorized accessibility, rehabilitation of blighted areas, which can increase neighborhood values and result in direct increase in community health and the quality of life in Glen County for our residents. Again, all of that is in the comprehensive plan. And for those that maybe have not read that even in our community, again, I would definitely, you know, take a look at that, and I would ask the consideration of the commission, you know, to, you know, consider that in any of these future decisions. 9.1 Housing Relevant Goals. Efficient land use guided by development suitability, transportation options, resource management, housing opportunities, diverse economic development, community health, and again, quality of life. I'll touch on just quickly as I can, again, some of the, some of the concerns of everyone in the room and others that may not be here tonight. Again, drainage being the biggest one, one of our major concern is the substantial amount of wetland on this property and the question of where the water will go. Nearly 50% of the parcel zoned FA is covered by wetland with a significant amount of dry upland portion being cut off by the significant wetland area running through the center of the property. The other parcel, which would contain a large portion of the proposed neighborhood, is similarly dotted with large isolated wetlands across the acreage. While the development plan shows pathways and structures navigating around these wetlands, the increase in impervious surfaces from additional rooftops, driveways, and roads would significantly raise water and runoff levels. With the removal of existing trees that currently manage the water absorption, the runoff needs a destination. Additionally, erosion and silt movement over time will begin to fill in some of these wetland areas, limiting the amount of natural drainage to occur. The neighborhood proposal includes multiple stormwater retention areas, but with our high water tables, obviously, we all know out there firsthand how quickly these ponds can reach capacity just from the groundwater and because of our high water table, let alone the added runoff. This raises the real risk of overflow and future environmental impacts on our surrounding areas. I can attest to, over the last two and a half years off of Myers Hill Road on the south end, I've had 180 inches of measurable rain. We've got a small mini weather station out there, so, again, we've had to manage our drainage, we've had to add additional ditches, you know, to try to, you know, manage this. So, again, drainage is definitely a significant issue. Next topic that has been brought up, crime. In our community meeting Monday evening at Baldwin Park, Sheriff Jump spoke on the potential of increased crime levels with increased population in higher-density neighborhoods, do want to stress that. He recommended to everyone to have a security camera, you know, around their homes if that were to occur. Those are the words of Sheriff Jump. Schools. Another concern with the allowance of higher-density neighborhoods is the pressure added to our infrastructure in schools. Satilla Marsh Elementary currently has a capacity of 780 with a current enrollment of 741 students. We've been told the new renovations replaced the outside temporary buildings, but did not offer a wide expansion to, to be able to cater to more students in the future. When a school is over capacity, it creates numerous challenges that can negatively impact both our students and staff. Overcrowding classrooms, overcrowded classrooms make it difficult for teachers to provide individualized attention, which is essential to the effective learning and student growth. The lack of personal attention often leads to lower academic performances and less engaging educational experience. Additionally, the essential resources like desks, computers, and even basic classroom supplies become stretched thin, making it harder to maintain a conducive learning environment. Overall, exceeding a school's capacity compromise the quality of education, student safety, teacher, teacher well-being, making it unsustainable situation for all involved. We already know too, we have a bus driver shortage and issues with the bus routes, more students, particularly in rural area, will exacerbate this issue. Traffic, next topic. We are painfully aware of the ongoing and growing concerns with the traffic on many of the roads that merge onto Highway 82. Trying to turn right onto Highway 82 has become such a risky task that countless near misses and occur, misses occur regularly, and far too many lives, life-altering serious accidents have taken place, already raising concerns about the safety issues. Most recently, obviously, with a young man's death out there. Please consider and advise on a traffic study as we move forward. I would, I will touch on, and this is for some of the historical side of Myers Hill area. It's a common sight on Myers Hill Road to see people walking down to Baldwin Park, kids crossing the road to play pickleball, and families taking drives on golf carts. I don't think any of us can fathom what would, what adding an additional 400 cars per day on the Myers Hill Road alone could mean to our road and how much it puts our children at risk. It would completely alter the character and lifestyle of our road. Allowing high-density development with small lot sizes, or even, again, we'll take that off the table with townhomes, but, or densely packed layout poses a serious threat to the character and history of our rural area. Our community is defined by wide-open spaces, family farms, longstanding properties that have been passed down for generations. Many households live on land that has been, that has been in families for decades. On Myers Hill alone, we have well-known families who have chosen to stay, generation after generation, preserving the family legacies and maintaining the rural landscape. These generations have a right to enjoy the environment that their grandparents left for them, a place that embodies the natural beauty, tranquility, and community spirit of our rural lifestyle. A high-density neighborhood would forever alter this character, disrupting the harmony of our surroundings and infringing on the unique heritage that defines our community. It is also important to recognize that many of our newer neighbors moved to this area specifically because of the rural atmosphere and spacious properties. These recent residents have chosen to invest in land, build homes here precisely because they value the large lot sizes, often spanning several acres or more, and the peaceful environment that the rural area offers. They sought out a community where they can enjoy privacy, open space, and the beauty of nature. Allowing this type of development not only disrupts the experience that so many of us have moved here to enjoy, but also the risk diminishing the unique qualities that make our community a desirable place to live. So where do we go from here? Our community is asking our planning commission to consider, again, alterations, which obviously the application has now been deferred, and to the zoning request, and at a minimum, require the 8,000-square-foot lot requirement, and address all concerns set forth this evening. I understand the developer, obviously, as we've said, is willing to compromise on several of these concerns for our community as well. With that, thank you to the commission, thank you for these considerations, and again, we appreciate all you do for our county, and appreciate the time, so. And again, I just want to stress to everyone in our community, the great conversations that, you know, we have had with Jake and Steve as well. So again, thank you guys for that, okay?
Mr. Arnold, I have just one, one very quick question. You and I've known each other for a long time.
Yes, sir.
How long did it take Ms. Arnold to edit that so you could give that to us so eloquently?
We'll, we'll just call it AI technology, how about that?
Gotcha. You did a good job, Jimmy.
Thank you, you didn't know I was that smart, did you?
No, I didn't. I know Ms. Arnold is, uh. All right, folks, any other person here would like to speak in opposition?
Can I just quickly add something to this?
Very quickly, Mr. Archibald, I'll allow that.
So I do appreciate that very comprehensive, almost like drinking from a fire hose, he said a lot of information there. But something that, because of his mention that our developer is willing to work with us, just, just throwing it out here right now, rather than going through this, whether to meet not with just one representative, with possibly at a neighborhood meeting to show up, and so multiple people can voice their concerns, you know, and, and then you could get a real, try to understand, we realize it's going to be developed. I mean, we know this is going to be developed, right? I think we're all on that same page, but we're just really, we're worried. I mean, we're just really truly worried, we're just genuinely concerned, okay? And you seem like you're just willing to work with us. So, some of the other things that he quickly did not touch on is, new folks coming here, the access to healthcare. We have one hospital that's been the same hospital for, I don't know how many years, a long time, but try to get a, a primary care physician if you're, if you're new here. They're not taking any new patients. It just affects all of Glen County, not just our little area here too. You know, that is one point I did want to, to touch on that I don't think was mentioned. And the fact that, you know, where the Exit 29 area is, I mean, we've got four big truck stops, but we don't have an urgent care, we have a little urgent care that isn't going to take care of anybody. You know, we, we're missing a lot of the pieces to this, this kind of development here that needs to be taken place to. So, and that's all I had, sir, thank you.
Mr. Archibald, I would like to say to you, I've, I've lived in that area roughly 58 years, and that area has been neglected in our community for years and years and years and years. And it's time for it to stop being neglected.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir. All right, any, anyone else, anyone else would like to speak in opposition? All right, that's the last chance. I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this. Mr. Lemmings, would you like to address anything that was said?
Yeah, happy to. I have a lot of notes here, so bear with me. I appreciate as well having the conversations with Jimmy, I'm happy that we had the chance to connect a couple of days ago, and, and talking with Steve, and what he just asked there, a meeting with the locals. So our, our plan here would be to take all of this back to the drawing board and come up with a solution, and I think we're going to stick around after and hear some more from, from the locals there to try to figure out a compromise on what we can, what we can do, and just so we know exactly what we're, what we're reaching for. From what I've heard tonight, it sounds like the, so the existing parcel is currently zoned at that 2.2 units per acre, but it is at the 8,000-square-foot lots. So that is kind of where we differ, is the, the 7,000-square-foot to the 8,000-square-foot. We'll definitely look at that, see what our numbers come back at, have to do a cost analysis, see what it does with the, with the forest maintenance extension and the, and the units to see what can kind of fit in there, and also with the, with the townhomes. I do want to talk about a few items here, so with, with the, the meeting, we're happy to meet. I love doing that before, before these meetings. I, I do it on practically anyone that is confrontational like this, I love to meet with the locals, find out what y'all would like so that I could relay it back to the owner, and we could come with to a compromise there before we come to the meeting. So I suggest, let, let us hear from y'all after this meeting and just talk with us. We've heard, heard what you are looking for, and I know we're going to talk more and just relay, I have Jimmy's number, so relay your comments to Jimmy, and I'll hear from Jimmy on anything that y'all want to address, and we'll plan to maybe meet at the park over there one night before the next month's meeting. You know, we are seeking to defer until, to next month, and we'll, we'll be ready for that meeting. So, one thing is the, the traffic, I know, I know traffic is a concern. And so with a, with a project this size, Glen County, when we get to the civil plan phase, they're going to require us to do a traffic study. Any improvements that are necessary on Myers Hill or at the entrance of the lakes, because of this development, is going to be the responsibility of the owner to do. So a traffic study is going to end up being required from Glen County traffic before they allow us to do a development of this size. So that, to the request for a traffic study, it's, it's going to happen with, with Glen County. The, the buffers, this site plan here has, has since changed, and now we have a lot of buffer actually off of, large buffers off of the lakes, and, you know, we're 1,500 feet roughly in, you know, this area from this highest point to here. This is a large-scale plan, I mean, this is a 200-scale plan, so the, so there is, there's significant buffer from Myers Hill and also the lakes, not on the plan you see there for the lakes, but the one that we're actually going off of, which I'm, I'm happy to share if, if y'all don't have that, which we will be amending to get rid of the townhomes. So, so buffers, we're, we're, we're trying to provide, you know, large buffers off, and also we're, we're restrictive because of the wetlands that are out there that we can't impact. Drainage, I spoke to that earlier, we're required by Glen County regulations to, to detain the 50-year. Obviously, we have to take into consideration all off-site water coming through the property. Anything that comes through has, that has to go through our ponds, our ponds have to be sized to take that off-site water and outfall at, at the rate it was whenever this was, as it's sitting right now. The trees out there, that is the precondition, and that's what we're required to size our ponds to hold. So the, that's why this, this one pond that we have on this updated layout, the one that's down next to the lakes now, is a, is shown as a, right over a 10-acre pond, is because we took into consideration the water table issues out there, and just, you have to get larger with these ponds in order to have any storage. So that was taken into consideration with the drainage analysis and, and, and then, let's see, so. Fire, and I know there's some concerns with the local emergency services and what they can, what they can serve. I'll have to default to Stephanie on how to actually answer that. I know that she's doing a, the county's done a development of regional impact, a DRI on this property. So, and that's going to be coming back later this week, so any concerns that come back from that we'll have later this week. And so Myers Hill, just so that y'all are aware, that is, that is planned, the easiest access to 82 is going to be at the lake's entrance. So Myers Hill is planned to be a secondary access is what it's believed to be. It's not considered an emergency access, but a secondary access. So there, there is going to be traffic going to Myers Hill, obviously, but it's not planned to be the primary entrance to the neighborhood. I also want to stress that this is a, a phase plan. They're not going to see folks coming out there, and you're going to see 400 lot units going up, you know, overnight. I mean, this is going to be a phase approach, and it's going to be years in the making. So hopefully that will help with any school concern, anything like that, and I'll also have to, to send that question to Stephanie on the, on the school capacity. But ultimately, what I want to get at is, you know, we, we want to, the owner wants to come to a compromise on something that works best with the, the community. He wants to be a good neighbor, happy to meet after we, you know, get this plan updated before we even come to the next meeting, so that maybe they feel good with what we're going to show, we can put it out there, and they don't have to waste their time even coming, or they can come, and it's going to, they're going to see this plan before we come back to the meeting, they're not going to be blindsided. So hopefully, everybody's going to be happy with the plan we put out there next, and, and we'll. we'll make sure we continue to have that conversation. I want to stress, just relay any, any comments to Jimmy and, and he'll be getting them back to me and I'll talk to him along the way.
Is that it, Mr. Lemmings?
That's it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yes, sir.
All right, commissioners, I guess I should ask, y'all didn't have any questions for Mr. Lemmings, did you?
I just had one for Stephanie.
Okay. I actually got one from Ms. Stephanie too, so it's a good thing.
Me too.
I was trying to look it up just so maybe everybody in the room will have it. What's the definition of medium density in the comprehensive plan?
Ah, so medium density, I think the low density we have defined is a twenty thousand square foot or greater, so this, this would fall under the medium density then is what they're proposing, if it's at eight thousand square foot lots.
All right, Mr. Neville. Yeah, that was my question. I was just, what numbers were associated with low, medium, and high density as far as that goes?
Yeah, I'd have to look at where the dividing line is between the high density and medium, but, but yeah, I know, I know low density is twenty thousand and greater for sure, so I'd have to look back at the complaint.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know if it was maybe X amount of units per acre, but twenty thousand square foot, you're only looking at, I mean, it's FA zoning basically.
Right, right.
So, okay. That's the only question I had.
And then I know Mr. Lemmings had talked about the fire service, drainage, and schools. We did send, we did send a copy, so during the development review team process that reviews the recent application, our fire department does, does have a review on that and I'll, after this meeting, I'll follow up with them as well, specifically with some of the concerns and questions that came up tonight and see if they have any further comments related to fire and EMS service, drainage, I mean, that has been discussed with the county as well. And then schools, we did send a copy of this application to the school district for comment and at the time of this meeting, we had not received comments back, but as we know, it's been a crazy month with storms and everything, so we'll follow up with them as well after this meeting. So, between now and the next meeting, we'll see if there's any comments from the school district.
Thank you so much. I still have a question for you, but I, I want to address the, the, the audience for just a second. Does everybody understand that they are not going to build townhomes on this property? Okay, I just, all right. And this whole compromise is about how many houses they're going to be able to build per acre and that's the reason why the deferral is being asked for? Okay. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood the, the outcome of this tonight. There is progress being made, the public portion hearing is already closed, ma'am. I'm, I'm, and there is progress being made and, and we are trying to help the developer and we're trying to help the folks that live around the developer for public safety issues and, and that type of stuff. So, we're trying to get all this worked out and I, I think it'll all come together in the end. Obviously, we're not ever going to make everybody happy, but, but we are compromising and, and we're trying to do what's best for our community. So, Ms. Leaf, my question to you, they are asking for a deferral, what do I need to do as the chairman or do I need to do anything to make that happen?
Sure. So, in order to defer it on the record, you would defer it to a date certain, it sounds like they are looking to go to the November twelfth meeting, which is your next MPC meeting. So, on the screen, that would be the, the third bullet point is move to defer this application to November twelfth. And just typically, your meeting date would have been the first meeting in November, but that is election night, so we had moved it to November twelfth so that we avoided election day.
Okay, so this, this will come back up November twelfth?
Yes, as long as the, the board votes to defer it to that specific date.
All right, commissioners.
And does that give them enough time?
They have indicated that it's.
Okay.
All right, commissioners, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to defer action of the proposed zoning decision upon motion of the planning commission or at the request of the applicant. The applicant may revise the proposal based on the comments at the meeting and resubmit it for the formal action at a future meeting of November twelfth. Is that what I need, is that all I need to do?
Ms. Leaf?
Yes, that, yeah, that, that covered it.
Okay.
All right, I need a second.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. All commissioners in favor. All right, Mr. Edgy, are you still there?
I am, I approve.
Are you still in Mexico?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm back in the U.S.
Thank you, Mr. Edgy. Thank you for your participation and we appreciate it. So, that is going to be five, that's going to be five zero. Five in favor, zero in opposition. All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Thank you, folks, for coming.